We have everyone we need?
Yes, we are.
All right, so why don't we get started at 8:32? If that's all right. Aaron, are we okay to get going?
Sounds great, Mike.
All right, 8:32. Just say, Aaron Bradley, Nick Milano. Let's see, we have Amy. We have Superintendent McKinney. We have Glenn, Dr. Pavlicek, Ada. Selena. And Beverly. Okay. All right, why don't we turn it over to Nick?
Mike, does the school committee have to call the order? The finance committee? Or no?
So Betty, do you want to?
Sure, let's do that, just to cover ourselves. Just wanted to call this meeting to order for the school committee subcommittee, finance subcommittee.
Great, okay.
I see all members here, so we're all set.
Great, all right, why don't we turn it over to Nick and Amy and Glenn and Superintendent McKinney for an update on where we are?
Sure, good morning, everybody, good to see everybody. We've been talking for a few weeks now about some of the changes that we've been making to our budget projections and things that have been outstanding, the main one being health insurance budget. We had a meeting with our broker Thursday afternoon and received some very good news in terms of health insurance for both the town's budget, but also for employees in fiscal '24. Based on cost escalation and health insurance worlds, based on the balance in our trust, we are able to bring forward a 0% premium increase in fiscal '24. So I'll let Amy touch a little bit more on our health insurance budget.
So basically, the original estimate was just kind of a guess estimate at that point. So after that meeting with our advisors, she looks at like the actual expenditures to date for the current fiscal year, the balance in the trust, and then makes a recommendation on where the rates need to be based upon projections for the next year. And she actually came in at a 0%. So this isn't even one of those situations where we're looking at trying to not, you know, hold the health insurance premium steady by planning an erosion of the trust. This is 0% without really any anticipated effect on the balance in the trust. And also, in basically how I do this calculation, as I look at the current enrollment, town, school employees, retirees, Milton retirement retirees, not teacher retirees, because they're in the GIC through mass teachers retirement. And we project out based upon the premium increase of 0%, the enrollment, what the numbers would be. And then I also include an estimate for enrollment changes, just in case some people that have a change in family status might come on our plan from their spouses or significant others. And then there's also other expenses within that number for the town's Medicare match and opt-out mitigation payments and Medicare refund for retirees. So overall, it's going down about 750 from the original estimate. And it's about a 2% increase year over year because of these other factors other than enrollment. I mean, other than premium increase, sorry. Enrollment's actually, overall, is pretty steady with where the estimate was last year.
Okay, thank you, Amy.
Thank you. And then the second piece, wanted to provide an update on, is use of free cash. So I can give a little summary as to where things stand presently. So once we received that information on the health insurance budget, we went back to our budget forecast and projections and did, plugged in some additional use of free cash to get that level, quote unquote, level rollover budget to balance. So what we did to do that was we brought in additional use of ARPA funds. So wind down our use of ARPA of about $650,000. And we also brought in use of free cash for recurring operations for that level service budget of about $638,000. So between reducing the health insurance budget, bringing in use of ARPA, bringing in use of free cash, we can call that balance, that level rollover budget balance. Where that leaves us is about $350,000 left in our free cash, in our certified free cash amount. So the breakdown on the free cash right now is, as we discussed last time, 1.2 million for capital, $1 million right now plugged as going to stabilization. $711,000 for one-time expenses. And then the $638,000 that I referenced going to recurring expenses. So that leaves us with a balance of about $350,000 remaining in what we had certified as free cash. And I'll note, just to piggyback on that and just to kind of close the loop, that we also had, as I had mentioned last time, the money going to the OPEB trust, the money going to the school building committee, and the opioid settlement funds to close out where we have our free cash plugged in right now.
And Nick and Beverly, just one point before you jump in. Nick, just to frame the discussion, can you tell us where that leaves us in terms of the needs-based budget that we have?
Sure, so on the needs-based side, that would leave a deficit of about $2.7 million.
All right, comments or questions, Beverly?
Nick, could you please repeat how much you were going to put in stabilization in the capital fund?
Sure, right now, $1 million total is what we have as placeholders, 750 into general stabilization, 250 as a placeholder into capital stabilization.
And of course, my daughter's screaming goodbye, just when you started saying that. So I think that's 1,007,500, is that right?
750 and 250 for a total of 1 million.
All right, other comments or questions? Aaron, there?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. I'm looking back at our meeting that we had back in mid-February. And in that meeting, the needs-based budget was a $5.85 million deficit. And since then, we found $4.4 million of free cash and $750,000 from the health insurance, just on the town side. So I guess my question is, why is our needs-based budget in a negative of 2.7 million?
So the use of free cash hasn't all just plowed right into the operating budget. So that deficit did not include any money for capital, did not include any money for stabilization funds, did not include money for the school building committee or for OPEB or for the opioid settlement. So it's a combination of where that free cash has gone. So the 4.4 million didn't directly go to offset that deficit. It went to invest in other things, you know, the capital budget being a big one, and then placeholders for stabilization funds. So it's a little bit of both, it didn't all go directly into that deficit.
Okay. Well, I'd want to see what's not going to be funded from the needs-based budget. Because this unicorn of the free cash, I am... I just want to, I would like to know what's not going to be funded from the needs-based budget, I think is where I stand.
Nick, can you lay out in brief the large amounts of the 2.7 by department?
Sure, so on... I'm just trying to think the best way to do this. So I'll run through...
Nick, since the school folks are here, maybe we start there.
Sure, on the school side, it's $761,000 of needs-based requests. That does not account for, if a full-time employee is included, any of those for their health insurance costs, which is, we peg at about $16,000 to $17,000 per individual when we roll in additional new positions. So that's 761,000 schools plus a variable of health insurance for full-time employees. There are other expenses.
All right, can we stop there?
Sure.
Is that okay, Mike?
Yeah, please, Aaron, go ahead.
Okay, so when you say needs-based on the school side, is that something above and beyond what the school committee already voted for?
No, this is both categories of, this is all within the umbrella of schools.
So what the school committee gave us as their budget, the town is saying that, that what the school committee gave us is $761,000 short. That's what the town is saying.
Correct, so what we tried to do was, we had the two, we had the big number that had all the needs-based requests. And rather than try to, we tried to build up towards it. So I'd say we're about halfway there at this point, because it was always like 3 million and 6 million were the two different numbers. So we've built up towards that in terms of what is remaining is that figure on the school side, as well as all of the needs-based requests from the rest of the departments.
I don't know how that's possible if they are an independent body that voted on so... I mean, I get it, but I just, I'm going to stop talking for a minute.
We have Beverly and Glenn, I'm not sure who was first. Glenn's pointed to Beverly, so go ahead, Beverly.
So I did some quick math on our needs-based budget that was submitted. And the $761,000 just happens to total everything not rollover required sped in ARPA restoration. So that means, you know, what we asked for, DEI and instructional coach and those overs- enrolled classrooms aren't going to be funded. And I can say on behalf, at least on my own behalf, we've spent the last five months talking about the budget. We've had forums, we're at every single forum, and actually usually this meeting, there's someone saying, "We need this math interventionist, our kids are struggling, our kids are struggling." And what we're going to say is, "We can't do that because we're going to put money in the stabilization fund." Then we have overcrowded classrooms at the high school and the middle school with kids who cannot vote for the most part. And we're telling them, "You have to sit in this overcrowded classroom because we want to put money in stabilization funds." And then most troubling is, we've got 25% of our high school students saying they're being bullied because of their race, and 19% of our LBGQT plus identifying students saying that they're being bullied. And the best we can say is, "We have to put money in stabilization." Like, I'm not sure, like, personally, I'm not the chair right now, and I'm also not the chair of the finance committee. But when the community comes back to us and points the finger at us, saying, "How did we fail our kids?", you know, Betty and Ada have got like a month and a half left. They're going to be looking at me, so I won't be chair next year. Start with that. But all jokes aside, I'm really concerned about the message that we're sending to our community. We have been harassed, we've been followed for an interventionist that we now can't fund. Like, at some point, something's got to give. I'd be happy to send them to the town, and you know, if it's the warrant committee that's asking for this, then you know, we've had members of the warrant committee come, showed up at the last meeting talking about, you know, "What about universal summer school? And what about the math interventionist? Do you have multiple?" And we've got nothing to tell them. So we have to be able to channel the responsibility for this decision-making back to the people who are asking us to do more, because I'm really concerned at the message that we're sending to the town, that our bond rating, which actually is pretty good, is AAA. And this rule of 5% means more than our kids right now. And unfortunately, those kids can't vote, this is the best they've got.
Thank you, Beverly. So if there aren't any other comments or questions yet, I will add a couple of thoughts, if that's okay. And that is, to your point, Beverly, I don't think any decisions have been made yet. And so, and I'm of the view that we still have some room here. Particularly in terms of meeting the needs-based budget. And you know, I would add, you know, with all the departments, whether it be traffic enforcement, which is something that our residents are crying out for, whether it be an unfunded librarian for several years, whether it be needs in our police department and our fire department, we do have significant needs that are part of that needs-based budget. In addition to what you said, Beverly, I mean, I don't know what the current statistics are, but I believe last November, we were near the bottom in district per pupil spending in this state. You know, of the 400-some-odd school districts, we're around 320. I don't know if that's the exact statistic, but it's pretty close, which some people might consider an embarrassment. So I think there's room for movement here. I think we have some buckets that we can talk about and that our operational folks can work on. We do have 350,000 of unallocated free cash. We are talking about using, Nick, what was the number, 680 or 6 that we're talking about using for operations right now?
So it's $640,000 right now.
640,000, I think over the last five years, we have had a recurring free cash of approximately $2 million. So there is certainly justification for using more free cash for operations while making clear to the community that this is one-time money and that will require the residents to decide if they want to move forward with funding those needs and those positions going forward. So I think we have some movement there. I think we have, so we have unallocated free cash of 350,000. We have a stabilization plug of $1 million right now, that will put us over our desired 5%. And so we have movement there. We have movement there, I think, personally, I think we have movement there of close to half, if not half. I think we also have a third bucket of, a third variable or a third bucket that we can look at, and that is the wage set aside and the opioid settlement. Those are payments that are going to be paid back. The opioid settlement, we're going to be getting that money in, this is a timing issue, so we're going to be getting that money back, that's $155,000. We have $350,000 in wage set aside, which was set aside for this year, so we're going to be getting that money back, so that's a timing issue. So that's another $500,000 that we could work with the timing. So I think we have some variables here to work down that needs-based deficit. And I, it's my view that we should do that, and we should look at at least those three buckets, which total, you know, about $1,350,000, just in my quick math. We should at least look at those, and there may be other areas we can look as well, as we refine this. But I think we have work to do, and I think we have variables, I think we have variables that will allow us to do that work. Time is short, we need to get something to the warrant committee next week. And so we need to, we need to, in my view, is we need to do some more work on this. Betty?
So I just, I have two points, one point that I wanted to make, and then one question I have for Nick. So you know, this was the year that we were going to have an operation override, and we had talked about that earlier in the year. But because of the unusual amount of free cash that we received, part of that also was a correction, I know, from last year's budget. So it looks higher than it would have been, even though, even with that correction, it's a unusually high amount. Because of that amount, I think the town has made the decision that we were not doing override this year, that we would try to use this free cash to help with some of the costs the town is dealing with. So I was wondering, Nick, could you elaborate a little bit more again for me and maybe other people, what the $600,000 figure for operations includes?
So we didn't earmark it for anything specifically. We said, okay, bringing in all of this stuff, making that health insurance change, you know, allocating ARPA towards the budget. Where does that leave us? The deficit was $638,000. We said, "We'll just fill it with free cash." We didn't say it, "It's going to be XYZ in this department." We just said, "To balance the budget for all of our town departments, it's $648,000 as things stands currently." So it wasn't, it wasn't with anything specific in mind, it was just saying, "Let's get to, let's get this figure balanced first and continue the conversation about where we go from there."
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions? Aaron?
Thanks, Mike. So I just want to make sure that my math seems right, because it's early. So back in the middle of February, our needs-based deficit was 5.85 million. And I understand that we're putting some stuff in stabilization, but I just want to make sure my math is correct. We have $4.4 million of free cash, plus we just found another 750 in the health insurance. So to me, that equals 5.15 million. And I subtracted the two, so that means we're only $700,000 short of a needs-based budget. And I get that we're putting stuff in stabiliz-, like, I understand that. But that is so close to actually funding what our town departments, what all the departments across the board have been asking for for years. So I just want to point out that that is probably the closest I've ever seen it in my five years, plus now this, when I was on the warrant committee, to actually being able to meet the need of our town because of this. And so I just, I really want to stress that we need to look at all these buckets, because there's a lot of numbers being tossed around. And we are so close to actually funding what our town needs. And it would be a shame if we didn't try and really come close to what our town needed, so that we could actually make improvements in the lives of all of our neighbors. And then, you know, obviously, next year, we are going to need an override. That is a fact of fact million. And the town can decide whether or not they, they want to continue with what our town needs to function properly according to our department heads. And I think this is a really crucial moment for us to be able to see whether or not our town will thrive or improve, or lives of our neighbors will improve on a daily basis if we actually come close to funding what has been needed for six years. So I am, I'm really hopeful that we can go back and work very hard to come as close as possible to hitting these marks, so that our neighbors can see that we use this money for this, this one time. And, and then they get to decide if we want to continue to live like, to see these improvements, not only for our kids, but for, like Mike was saying, our traffic department, our, you know, library, which I rely on regularly, for our health department, for all the other departments, police, fire, like, all of these things add up, and they have been without for years, because we have constantly said to them, "Not this year, not this year, not this year." And there has been no long-term planning. So I just really want to stress that I would like to see us go back as much as possible to come as close as we can to that 5.85 million deficit that we saw. So that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Aaron, all good points. I will point out, one of the things that Nick mentioned is that there are things that is current, that there, that is currently included in the use of free cash, that are also critical needs, including the school building committee, including, including the use of some of that free cash for capital, which pays for Chromebooks for the schools. And so, and so, so, and Nick can give us a list at some point when they work it all out, the list of how the free cash will be used. But there are, there are one-time needs that I think that are important as well, that may, that may cut into that 5.7 number that you have. So I agree with you, I think we should get as close as we can. But, but, you know, I don't think we're going to get there, I don't think we're going to get all the way there because of the number of needs, whether they be one-time or operational. But I do think personally, I, because of the, because of the areas that I pointed out, I think there's, there's room for, there's room for a lot of movement with respect to that $2.7 million number. Glenn?
Yeah, just a point of clarification, when we say 2.7 for needs-based, that's not counting using the 3.50 that remains from free cash, correct?
That's correct.
We have 3.50 towards that, but that's, at the moment, all we have towards the 2.7.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And then, and then the other, the other areas that I look at, and there may be others, are the timing issues with respect to opioid and wage set aside, because that money's coming back, right? It'll come back as free cash, I think. And then, and then the question of the stabilization, and whether you, whether you put $1 million into stabilization, and whether that, whether you go above that 5% goal, or whether you, which is, which is worthy, right? When you get a lot of free cash, when you get a lot of free cash, it's a worthy goal to put aside funds for a rainy day. However, in this circumstance, seems to me, we might want to, we might want to cut that down a bit. Selena?
Thanks, Mike. You know, I've been mostly quiet in these meetings, because I'm just trying to understand all the moving pieces. But I do sort of, I think, at a high level, struggle, I understand sort of the stabilization, I understand putting away for a rainy day, of course, that makes sense, right? But however, you don't put away for a rainy day when you can't meet your basic needs. And I think one of the things that I sort of struggling with is, I think, very much like Aaron, as I look at the school committee budget, well, the school budgets in particular, because that's the one I'm more intimately aware of, right, or grounded in. The, the needs budget, it really is like bare minimum needs. It is not extravagant in any way. And I think you just pointed, Mike, to the fact that we should be ashamed of ourselves in terms of our per pupil spending. But then there are all these other needs that are reflected in the overall budget that have been ignored in the town. So yes, as a town, we can say, "We're going to put away all these funds," but we're putting away at the, at the price of what, at the cost of what? And I think that's a big question for us to ask ourselves. And I would say that we need to keep pushing to make sure that we're thriving as a town and not just barely surviving, because I feel like that's sort of the mentality or the approach we take, which I understand, it's a, it's a much more conservative budgeting approach. But I think we heard, at least from the warrant committee, I heard, you know, "Do more, take leaps." Mind you, we get a little bit of mixed messaging, because it's that, and then it's, "What are you spending it in?" But I can tell you that the money's being spent well and being put where the needs are. So I just, I just wanted to comment on that, that I really do feel like if we can push ourselves to really think about right now and what we need, that is, is where I would prioritize, especially as we think about making the case of why an override is needed, right? An override is needed, we continue to thrive, and also so we can continue to put away. Otherwise, we're at risk of just becoming a town that is just not meeting the needs of its residents.
Thank you, Selena. So, so we should talk about what our goals are, and time is short. And I will say, for me, the goal is to try to get a consensus. You know, since I've been working on these things going back to, I think, 2009, 2010, we have always had, save one year, a consensus among select board, school committee, and warrant committee on our budget. We don't have to. People may have differing views, but we've been able to achieve that consensus, and I think that's helpful for town meeting, and I think it's helpful for everyone, if we can. So, so that's my goal. If we can get to the point where the school committee and the select board and the, and the warrant committee have some consensus going forward. But, you know, I, I think, I think everyone in this meeting has delivered a consensus view on... Um, delivered a consensus view on what direction we should go in. Um, uh, at least that's my perception. Uh, and, um, and, and so I, I would ask, uh, our operational folks to try to work towards that. Uh, that view, um, in the short term. And let's, uh, let's see if we can't get, uh, let's see if we can't get closer to, to, uh, to, uh. To, um. What Selena mentioned and, and trying to meet the needs of, uh, meet the needs of the residents in the town, so. Uh, does that make sense in terms of, and, and then we can talk about timing, but that's, uh, that's my thought. Ada?
Yeah, I, thanks, Mike. I, I just want to thank our select board. Um, colleagues and, and the collaborative approach that you've taken to working on the budget. It's hard. Um, but you know, we've, we've, um. Been doing this work for quite some time and it wasn't, it wasn't always, uh, such a collaborative approach and, and, and I really appreciate that. And, um, you know, I, I just want to, um. Show my support for the items that Bev has mentioned and Selena, um, in terms of the, the school needs. Um, I, I think, you know, the last few years during the pandemic, when we were putting money aside into. Stabilization when it was pouring outside, um, in terms of i- it being very rainy day. Um, that was tough and, um, I, you know, I'm really hoping that, um, you know, if we give this. Um, back to, um, our team to, so work together to figure out how we can. Um, meet as many of our needs as, as we can with the money we've got. Obviously it puts us. In an awkward position, funding, um, more of our needs with free cash. Um, um, but, you know, I think it's just something that we need to do and, and this is, does sound like an extraordinary year in terms of. The availability of, of many things that have been mentioned here. So I, I encourage. Our, our team to put their heads together and, and try to make this work. Um, I don't know, since we need to go back to warrant committee, um, next week, whether. We need to meet again before that time. Um, but, um, I'm certainly happy to make myself available if that's the case.
So if we could talk about that for a minute, timing, I, I, I think we do need to be, meet again. I, I, I would, I, I think the select board needs to, may need to have a meeting. In the interim to, to, uh, to vote on what the, what the select board thinks, because this is just the finance committee. We, we don't, we don't, we're not a majority of the board. We're just, we're just the, we're just charged with trying to work through it and make a, a, a recommendation to the committee as a whole. So. So I think, and Nick, you can help us with the timing. I, I think we need to, we need to come to ground. Uh, on something if we're going to, on a consensus, you know, by the end of this week or by the first of next week. But, but, and, and when do we, when do we, when's our drop dead date in terms of, in terms of getting something to the, to the, to the warrant committee?
I would agree, end of this week or early next week, if the select board were to pencil in a meeting for the fourteenth, then we could have that wrapped up. So I think give, do that a couple of days ahead of that, so maybe Friday morning if folks are available.
Yeah.
Anytime Friday, really, but we've been.
Why, why don't we do this? The fourteenth is a Tuesday, right? Okay, so what, my suggestion is this, let's, let's, uh, let's set one, set something for Friday. And see if we can, see if we can get there. But also let's pencil in a meeting for Tuesday morning. Because, uh, we may not get there on Friday. You know, we may, we may, we may get close and we may have to have, still have some work to do, so. So, or, or Monday morning. But I, but I would say let's, let's do something for Friday and then let's do something for. For, for Monday or Tuesday, because I, I would like to be in a position to make a recommendation to the, to the select board. By Tuesday evening and I, you know, and I, and I, I'm not sure what the school committee's calendar is in terms of making recommendations or getting their, their committee to. But if we, if we could all, if we can get to a consensus. Um, certainly I'd like to do that before, you know, by the fourteenth. Um, get to consensus between school committee and select board and then, and then see what the warrant committee has to say.
Yeah, our finance subcommittee meets on, um, Tuesday mornings at eight thirty. And what I could do, we, we post for the entire school committee. So even though we're not scheduled to have a school committee meeting until I think the twenty second, I could certainly encourage all the members. To come on to those finance up committee meetings so we can have a, a thorough discussion.
So maybe we could piggyback on your meeting, Betty, on Tuesday morning. Um, you know, just to, to pencil it in to see, you know, if we, if we, if we don't get to. If we don't, if we don't get to where we need to be by Friday morning, by the end, you know, on Friday. That, if that works with people. And Erin, I, I don't mean to speak out of turn, I, but in terms of scheduling, please jump in in terms of that.
Mike, that all works for me. I'm on, um, spring break this week, so. I'm trying to, you know, not study and relax, but this sounds great. I love eight thirty morning meeting.
Better than seven thirty.
Right? Oh, please, yes.
All right, all right. So, so let's, let's, uh. Let's do something for Friday morning and then pencil in Tuesday morning and, and, uh, and see, uh, see, see if we can, uh. If we can get, uh, get closer on our needs based budget and, um, and get to a point where, uh, where we can, uh, we can all, uh. We can all agree on something. Glenn?
Uh, next Tuesday morning, we're, we're posted for an in-person meeting. So do you want to set it up through the Zoom webinar here and then we'll jump onto that, um, just logistically if, uh. Nick wants to set the two of them up and then we'll just alter our post to jump into this one for Tuesday morning?
Yeah, I see her nodding, so why don't we do that? And Ada's nodding as well, so.
Thanks, Ada.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, um, anything else? Is that, is that, is that deafening, is that deafening silence or is it, is it, is it, um, is it comforting silence?
I think that, no, I, I completely agree. I think that we do actually have a, we're very consensus-y on this meeting today. And so I think that this is a good thing and I'm looking forward to seeing what our team can come back with us, to us with on Friday. I think, I think. Think we're in a, in a good place and I think that we heard, heard each other loud and clear and I just want to thank those on the call for working together. This, um, this is a good model for us to, um, continue to push forward as a town. Creating our budget with all of the departments. So thank you all.
Great. Um, all right, so, uh, so Erin, I, I think we can, we can adjourn.
I think so. I think it's at nine, ten that I made a motion to adjourn.
Nine, ten, Erin Bradley, motion seconded by me.
I agree, I.
Erin is in favor and I am in favor as well.
Okay, and then I will do it for the school committee, um, motion to adjourn.
A second.
Okay, all those in favor? Beverly? Selena?
Yeah.
Yes.
Have a great week, everyone.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Enjoy your break.